... dedication to trail markers that the historical preservation put along the trail. Next picture is some pictures from Williams College. Senior Lake is the little pond down by administration. Junior Lake is the big lake up by northern the canals. Once upon a time, junior lake had sailboats, they had kayaks, they had planes, they had paddles, and above the house. They had problems with their dam, the water was lower, and right now it's like a big farmer pond. It doesn't have much water. The water drainage was changed due to the built their soccer field.
Mr. Payne, you have one minute remaining.
That's good. We'll do that last page. And that's just a pretty picture of his historical graph we pulled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Now, if there's nobody else that would like to talk. So we have the next thing on our agenda, which is the presentation of proclamations and dedications to the city of Fulton.
We got one more.
Kathy?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I didn't think I'd see you tonight, so.
I tried not to give it away in my email earlier. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Melissa Strat and I'm the deputy city clerk for the city of Camden Town. I'm also on the state public relations committee for the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association. My purpose in being here tonight is to recognize city clerk Courtney Croson for her being awarded the designation of IIMC certified municipal clerk. This certification is a combination of education and experience, and Courtney is to be commended for her dedication in achieving this goal. The Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association has approximately 516 clerks in the state of Missouri. With the ever-changing state statutes and rules governing cities, it is vital that someone be kept current on those regulations. M O C C F O A takes this role very seriously and will continue to strive to ensure that the education provided is relevant to the needs and positions we cover. Additionally, you, the board, and mayor are to be commended for your continued support of Courtney as she has worked towards the certification. It clearly demonstrates that you recognize and the knowledge that she receives at the educational sessions of great benefit to you, your staff, and your citizens. I, on behalf of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association, give best wishes to Courtney as she continues her commitment to lifelong learning and her career and services to the city of Fulton.
Presentation of proclamations and dedication of the city of Fulton community Christmas tree. Mr. Dunlap, I think you have something to bring to us?
Yeah, I think we've got a little slideshow if we can get that pulled up. While he's doing it, though, we had a lot of help with this, and I think some of them's out in the crowd. Gary Blackburn with Pro Muffler, Joan Barry Morris, Garden Club. It was kind of a, it was a group effort. And Darren's clicking. But it started last year as we was putting up the Christmas decorations. Everybody knows that our Christmas decorations aren't in very good shape. So we started looking for something we could do. And I believe shortly after Christmas, Mr. Johnson took Mike and I down there to the roundabout and said, "What do y'all see?" Like, "We see a roundabout." But it was Bill's idea to try to build a tree there. Then it became, "How big? How big around? And how many lights is it gonna take? And what kind of materials do we have on hand to help the tree?" So later that year, later last year, early this year, we met with Bill again, said, "Are you really serious about this? Because this is gonna take a little bit of time to round up the stuff." And Bill talked with the mayor, and everybody decided we was serious. So we went and talked to some gentlemen in electric apartment and building ground and said, "Guys, you think we can do it?" And they said, "Ah, we can do it." I mean, they've never told us, "No, we can't. They figure out a way to make this stuff work." So we started, and this is a fuzzy picture, I mean, we started with a used flagpole that was at morning side. We, Mike and them took a truck down there to the roundabout, said on the, on the roundabout, see how far they could lift, which basically determined the height was about, gonna be about 45 to 50 feet. Well, we needed a hoop around the bottom of it to tie everything to. And your two finest engineers, Kyle Brimmer and myself, decided what the bend ought to be. And we gave it to Gary, and he bent it, and we was wrong. So we started that again. And Gary was really good to work with and came up with some good ideas. Well, we didn't want to try to do it out in the middle of the roundabout, so we kinda strung some lights out in the truck shop. And we didn't want it to be random. And then I believe it was, it was Pat and them guys said, "You know, we need to stagger them lights. We're gonna have a whole bunch of lights right at the top. It's gonna be hard to, hard to work." So we set it up there, and then we had a star. And we got the star built. And then we set the pole up at the service center and tried to see if our two-foot space was gonna work, and everybody agreed that it, that it was. So we dug, we got with engineering, can't leave engineering out. Engineering got the permit from MoDOT to allow us to do this, so hats off to MoDOT for allowing this. Engineering got the permit, we dug a three-foot, a five-foot hole, filled it full of concrete.
Don't forget the Garden Club day we had.
The Garden Club, I gotta talk about the Garden Club. We met with the Garden Club before this started, and we kinda promised we would try to wait till after frost to do this, so the wildflowers could do their thing. We had a late frost, y'all. So we met with them again, and they gathered their seeds, and we waited and tried to let everybody get everything done, and the Garden Club was great to work with. They was, they was really great. So then we installed the anchors, because while we got the pole bolted down, we also anchored it, because, you know, we're utility people and that's just what we do. One truck, correct? One truck got stuck in the roundabout while we was trying to put it together, and you can see the, you know, the Fulton traffic, they figure out a way, they're just going backwards through the roundabout to take care of everything.
Like a normal Tuesday afternoon.
The tree's going up good, and our goal was to, as we built this, is to make it reusable, where we can take it down, store it nicely, put it back up. Billings and ground took all the scrap that we found, wire brushed it, painted it, made it look like it does. They've got a lot of hours in this tree. Hanging lights, I believe that's the mayor in that bucket at that point in time. Working on the star.
Daryl's, Daryl's down playing that picture. When the mayor got back to the ground, he was, he was that much happier person than he was when he went up there. He said, "The bucket just wouldn't stop doing this."
And on 11/5, the tree was lit the first time. It did come on when they had the timer set. Mr. Johnson was down there, and he texted me, and I didn't know if he was gonna text me, "Hey, it's not on," or "It's on." And then that first night. And then Alan Combs, if we could dim the lights, you could see it better, he took some pictures of it with a drone. And then there's the other picture with the moon in the background. So I think, I think everybody's really proud of the tree. It turned out well, and it's, it's the workmanship of your employees that made that possible. How many lights it got on there, Micah? Andrew. Andrew had built the star before, so we nicknamed him Star Band. Everybody else named Star Alone. That's Andrew.
Andrew, raise your hand, just for the council motion.
That's Andrew.
I think there's just 1,700 lights.
About 70.
Yeah. They're LED, and how many amps did y'all check on it?
Six and a half amps.
Six and a half amps pulls that tree. So it's pretty good.
Pretty, less than.
I got that much in my house. I think you're true.
So there was a lot of work.
Lot of love.
A lot of love.
Lot of pride.
There was, you know, Dennis was involved a little bit, 'cause we was trying to figure out how big the bottom should be versus the height, and none of us agreed on that. A lot of sketches on napkins.
Well, and then, as we kinda discussed, we were gonna have Gary build, build a circle, and that's how big the bottom was gonna be. We kinda said, "You know, try for about 30 feet, but if it's 33, or 28, or, it's gonna be awesome." And it's like, 30 feet, like, on the money.
And it went right together, right like, like it's supposed to, after me and Kyle got out of the way for telling Gary how to bend pipes. So you have a lot to be proud of, these people. These people did a great job, and I think even people that I know that don't live in town, that live in Columbia, bragged about that tree. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, go along with this, we also have a couple of proclamations. Guess I'll come down now. We're gonna start off with the Garden Club. It's a proclamation and recognition and appreciation, whereas it is fitting and proper for the city of Fulton to recognize the efforts made by the Fulton Garden Club to see Fulton Community Christmas Tree come to fruition, and whereas the city of Fulton Garden Club graciously maintains the area located in the Second Street Roundabout, and their passion and understanding of the native Callaway County plants is noteworthy, and whereas the Fulton Garden Club kindly worked to tend to their fall maintenance activities ahead of the normal schedule in order to allow the city crews to place the Fulton Community Christmas Tree in the roundabout. And now, therefore, I, Lyle Cannell, Mayor of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Fulton, extend our sincere appreciation to the Fulton Garden Club for the pride they take in ensuring the area is visually appealing year-round, and for their efforts to ensure the Fulton Community Christmas Tree is a success for years to come. In witness thereof, I, Lyle, have unto set his hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Fulton, Missouri, this 26th day of November 2019. Now, we also would like to recognize Mr. Blackburn. A proclamation and recognition and appreciation, whereas it is fitting and proper for the city of Fulton to recognize the outstanding efforts made by Gary Blackburn Jr. to see Fulton Community Christmas Tree come to fruition, and whereas Gary, following in the footsteps of his father, is considered a local legend in the racing community and can be found in his muffler shop on any given day doing the work he loves and has built a career around, and whereas without Gary's assistance, with the design and forming of the ring base, Fulton's Community Christmas Tree would not have been possible. And we hope he and his family take as much pride as the citizens of Fulton do in knowing his handiwork will be a permanent fixture in this community for years to come. And now, therefore, Lyle Cannell, Mayor of the city of Fulton, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Fulton, extend our sincere appreciation to Gary Blackburn Jr. for his efforts and craftsmanship. The Fulton Community Christmas Tree is an obvious success that is undeniably attributed to Gary's contributions. In witness thereof, Lyle, have unto set his hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Fulton, Missouri, this 26th day of November 2019.
Should we take some pictures of electric guys and city crews that showed up?
Probably not a bad idea.
If we could get some pictures of our city employees, that'd help put this together, too. The ones that happen to be here.
I think so. I think so, too.
You can bring, you can bring the kids, huh?
Yeah, bring the little ones.
Bring the kids.
Bring the little ones, yeah.
Daryl? Kyle?
Come on, guys. Bring the little ones, there you go.
You all are more than welcome to stay. I'm not saying you said anything there, but.
Tell him happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Star Band.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Gary. Next, let's move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. On tonight's consent agenda, we'll have the approval of the city council meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2019, approval of the city council meeting minutes of November 12th, 2019, approval of the director of administration report of October, approval of the appointment of Elaine Keim to the Fulton Housing Authority Commission, and acknowledgement of the following board and commission reports. For historic preservation commission, we have the August 20th and September 17th meetings. Human rights commission is January, good lord, sorry, everybody. Planning and zoning commission is July 8th, and public utility board was August 26th and September 23rd.
Anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion?
All those in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? All right. Now we have Ms. Hochslag here to present the financial report.
We've now recorded nine months of sales tax, and we are right in line with the same period of time last year. I don't think there's $3,000 worth of difference. I'll start out by telling you that typically on the October statement, I report the property tax revenue. However, I did not receive notice of how much money we could expect until after this report had gone to bed. I've tried to make note of anything out of the ordinary. We had several big encumbrances in, in October. Police department encumbered $70,000 for two new vehicles. We have about $500,000 worth of encumbrances for the soar department, and a new trash truck for $289,000, $290,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, with, with utility bills being late, how's that all working out for the citizens?
You know, it was amazing.
Nobody, nobody's got a problem?
No, we extended the due date, and everybody paid by 15th. So we're all creatures of habit, I think that, that has to show that. And the software conversion is ongoing and taking lots of time.
Thank you.
Anybody that's been to a software conversion knows it's like worse than a triple root canal.
Far, far worse.
And we're going in for triple root canals two to three days in a row. So it's.
I live here.
It's been a painful process for, for that, getting through it.
Do you expect the utility bills to be late again next month?
Yes.
Okay. Have we made plans to put that out so that the community knows?
Yes, yes. There's an ad ready to go in the paper. There will be consultants for the utility billing side of the house, starting December 2nd through the week of the 12th, I think. So they'll be here for two full weeks. And during that time, we're, we will be processing the bills and encode, so.
I hate, I hate a simple phone update, so I can't imagine a complete computer update.
No, we couldn't have imagined it either, to tell you the truth. It's coming.
Motion to approve the financial report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Thanks, Kathy.
We haven't any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. We have Mr. Bono here from Murma, and I think he has a presentation of 2019 grant awards.
For somebody newer on the council, I just want to point out that Patrick used to be my assistant. He used to work for the city of Fulton several years ago and did a great job, but wanted to go on and try something different and better, and moved on, moved on up and moved on out. Look at him today!
Give him money, Wade.
I don't know if it's better, but I'm here. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Again, my name is Patrick Bono, loss control director for Murma. We have 83 cities in the association, much like yourselves, who attempt to lower losses across the lines, whether that's liability or workers' compensation. One of the ways that we do this, and this is my annual speech, because you guys get this annually, is we have a grant program. We try to get the money back into the hands of the cities. And if it weren't for the hard work of Robert and Gaila Dunn and some of the other department heads, you wouldn't be getting this money. So this is, this is money applied for at the bequest of their hard work. And I have a list of the grants that you will be receiving this year. And the total this year comes up to $10,373.83. And if my phone will work.
Here, hold this.
Do you have a list? So several items this year. The most expensive item is a hydraulic hammer. I'm assuming that's for the street department. Yes. We'll find a home for that, apparently. Air quality for wastewater, flammable storage cabinet, automatic external defibrillator for electric distribution, which is kind of a new thing. You know, you hope your crews don't encounter a shock during the course and scope of their employment, but if they do, it's a good thing to especially have that on an electric crew. We have fall protection for wastewater, water tower fall protection, less lethal shotgun and rounds for the police department, and then a dash camera for the police department as well. And I think you, you also have a list of these at your individual locations, but I would be glad to answer any questions if you do have any. But I will present this to the deputy mayor.
While they're, while they're doing their presentation, I'd like to touch, talk about Murma a little bit. Murma, they have, they have us do like documenting when we have safety trainings and require certain safety trainings throughout the year. And each department is required to maintain what's referred to as the black box, all their schedules and all their agendas, and who attended in the black box. And Patrick then comes around once a year and audits the black box, kinda gives us an idea what... We use Patrick's name in vain many, many times a year. All we gotta do is say it's because of Patrick, and he'll be like, "Okay, all right, fine." And everybody gets on board, and they fill out the paperwork, and they get it done. So I mean, so think of your car insurance provider coming around and checking your tires. They, and if they don't like your tires, they tell you to get new ones. And they come around and check your brakes. Well, he comes around and checks hard hats and fall protection and trenching and shoring and just 150 different parks equipment, the playground equipment, does any inspection on that. So one thing I like to say about it is, even though they're our insurance company, they kinda force us to be better.
It's pretty cool.
Because of their, their audits and their inspections, if we fail an audit, they can charge us extra. It's part of the deal. And we've, it goes back many years, but the playground equipment, the new playground equipment, probably eight to 10 years ago in Veterans Park, we were getting some serious strikes on that playground equipment, just lots of reasons. And Patrick was getting ready to find us $60,000. And we kinda said, "Well, instead of us paying him $60,000, why don't we spend that $60,000 and just get some new playground equipment?" And so they worked with us and said, "You got six months." And they let us do it, and it all worked out, and we got new playground equipment, and they're happy, and we're happy, and a lot of kids enjoy the playground equipment. So we, we really appreciate, and we, lots of times we think you're kind of a pain, but you're, that's, you're just doing your job.
We're often.
We appreciate your efforts.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate those comments. You know, we're, we're often used as a crux in, in terms of safety and getting things done, and that's certainly not a problem, glad to do that. But in a, in a self-admission, I guess, within the last couple of weeks, maybe month or so, and I'm glad the, the mayor is not here tonight, because I would be telling on myself. But I, I texted Bill one evening, and I said, "You know, that's great you're doing this Christmas tree and, and all, and you even got the mayor in the bucket truck, as I remember, but the pictures that you posted on Facebook do not show me any fall protection." And there were several pictures, and I thought I was good. And he said, "Oh, contraire," and sent me the rest of the pictures on the phone, all of which showed a harness on the mayor. So, you know, I try to be as observant as I can, but if I'm not getting the whole, the whole story, you know, that's, you do find things, and that's why you, you don't jump to conclusions immediately, but just, you know, keep asking questions. And the proof was in the, the following pictures he had sent. So I'm very glad to see that, especially since it's the mayor on the business route putting up one of the most public things you can see.
I don't know if Lyle would have allowed himself to be up there without a harness.
You would never find Lyle anywhere near a bucket truck. He barely will come up this ramp without a harness. He does not like heights.
Glad to hear it.
The bottom line is, if there's an issue, without, with the exception of him falling out of the bucket, it's trouble anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
I would like to mention to everyone that the grant money is a matching or, or a good part matching fund, so most of it is 50% with the exception of the dash cams.
Right.
And it's a 65%. So, so there is definitely match money that we are putting out as well.
Absolutely, yes. And to that end, across the whole association, with $250,000, we're able to leverage close to $2 million in safety improvements because of that. So it's, it's a very good program.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I've just come to the part where we like to set aside a little bit of time to let the council express their concerns. Ms. Sebacher, do you have anything this evening?
I do not, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Reclu?
I'd like to thank everyone who's here tonight. Wish we were here more often. You're always welcome. Thank you for forcing your opinions. And come back again, please. Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
I have a question about Collier Lane by the car wash. I've had citizens from both Ward 2 and Ward 3 ask me... I mean, I understand it had something to do with the water tower and some repairs that needed to be done there, but there's questions about is the street, the status of the street and repair of the street and how it will be looking the rest of the winter.
Probably the rest of the winter is gonna look about the way it does.
That was the concern.
We did plate the street to try to get that warm weekend where we could... Or, I guess that worked out pretty good. Okay. And then as it settles this winter, we'll keep adding gravel and keep that passable until warm weather hits, and then we'll see what the settling does.
Okay.
Okay.
It needs more now.
Okay.
There you go.
That's all I have.
That's all for you? I just wanted to express a thank you to whoever it was that gave us our coat racks. Thank you.
I think Robert sits in there like that.
Mr. Braun?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Ms. Paesnick?
I have nothing.
Mr. Moore?
Well, I have two little short ones. If you have in... This is not a concern. If you go up on the corner of Jefferson and 7, I believe that our crew was doing a wonderful job on the handicap port today. It looks really good. And my other one was in the administrator's report. What is the price for adoption of a cat?
Dennis?
Dogs, you say?
All right. I guess we'll move on to resolutions. We have Resolution Number 3358 pertaining to an agreement for services with the Callaway Chamber of Commerce. It was tabled at our last meeting. Do we have a motion and second to remove it from the table?
I move to remove it from the table.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk, did we have another motion at the last meeting to adopt this resolution?
We did have a motion, yes. We did have a motion at the last meeting by Councilwoman Sebacher, seconded by Councilwoman Shiverdecker, to proceed with adopting Resolution 3358 as presented. Do your motions and seconds still stand?
Yes.
All right, then we do have a motion on the floor to go ahead and move forward in a second.
All right, we have a motion, second, to accept the chamber resolution as written. Any discussion?
I just would like to put one thing out there, and then I'm done, is we look back, the council sat in a budget meeting and discussed what was happening, as well as prior to that budget meeting, we had the opportunity to accept $12,000 of rent from the chamber, which we declined. And so, in my eyes, ultimately, they are $2,000 ahead. They were willing to pay $12,000, and they're $2,000 ahead of it as it is now. No one is trying to slight or belittle anything that the chamber is doing. I don't believe any one of us have that intention.
Thank you. No more discussion?
Deputy Mayor, I think we have opportunity here. We have a brand-new opportunity that was brought to us since our last meeting, since we tabled this resolution, that would offer some opportunity for funding to the chamber for a brand-new program that will assist our high school seniors. I think we have opportunity to look at some various things this next year. I believe we should consider taking the amount back to the $88,000 and finding funding opportunity, whether we call it two more $5,000 sponsorships and we find opportunity there to sponsor various activities within the chamber, or we choose to sponsor this, the matching funds to assist with this grant program for the welding. I think we have opportunity to amend the resolution prior to passage.
It is...
So, we do have an opportunity. Is that a motion?
Well, we have an opportunity, and I'm opening it up for further discussion.
It is my understanding that the... There is not matching funds with this. And if I'm incorrect, somebody please correct me.
They received a grant for $103,000 to support a welding program for high school seniors to use the equipment that they had received, roughly a $350,000 grant to open it up to various community members. And the request is for the city to assist with the marketing and the advertising and the time and materials and all the resources that will go into supporting the transportation and various things of those students to the chamber building for that welding program. And that's the pieces that I understand it. And so, while maybe this is just a new opportunity that I think we could take advantage of.
I certainly feel like it could be part of the two, two of the $5,000 amounts that were allocated already at the $78,000 for the chamber. That's all I got.
I see it as an additional opportunity.
We don't do HVAC classes. We don't do CDL classes. There's lots of other things that we don't have and do in what would be the difference. No one is not... Everyone is trying to support the community.
Absolutely.
So...
Including the council.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I feel at this time, the way this has been presented to the chamber, the timing of it, I feel that we should stay with our $88,000 and look into next year, early next year, if there's something, a need or a change that we make. But at this time, it's like taking your budget and having to take a certain amount out of it and limb on that for the rest of the year. And I think it's not... It's bad timing. I feel that it wasn't presented early enough, and I just think we should look at it next year to change. But right now, I feel we should stay with what we promised to give them and what we have committed to do for the year.
So, is that a motion to amend the resolution?
Yes, yes, amend the resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to amend the resolution, which would change the resolution back to the $88,000 as it was last year. It means we're not doing the $5,000 awards for anything. It's all straight, just $88,000.
That's what I feel.
I kind of like the idea of having certain amounts allocated for specific projects. The way that we currently have it written up, it's $58,000 as a bulk gift and then four $5,000 projects. Now, if we add that $10,000 that was requested for the welding program, that could be an additional $10,000 project defined for this specifically to show the community, this is exactly what we're supporting in the chamber. And I agree, next year early, we do need to have a discussion with the chamber and everyone involved. Hey, this is our idea of where we want to go with the budget. It's a little late this year, but so we need to discuss early next year on this budget. So, Ms. Reclu, was your intent to take it back to $88,000 or was it to keep the $20,000 in sponsorships and add the $10,000 specifically for the welding program?
Mine was to still with the $88,000.
The $88,000, okay.
Okay, so everybody understands she's going straight back to what we were doing before we changed anything. So, we have a motion and a second. We've discussed. Any more discussion?
I think I'm with Lindsay. I like the designation. I don't know. I think that that's... It's important for the community to see that this money, although gifted for the $58, that bulk portion, but that the remainder is to fund Program A, Program B, Program C, whatever they may be, so that the city, the citizens see that. I think that's important. I do like Mary's... I appreciate your comments, but for me personally, I think that the designation and splitting it up is better.
If you'd like to amend your amendment, I'll amend myself.
Me? No.
All right, so we're gonna vote now on... Wait, you have something?
We're voting on Mary's amendment.
We're voting on Mary's amendment.
Original one, okay.
Of $88,000 as it was previously.
Flat $88,000.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? No.
Can you raise your hands for me, please? Thank you very much.
All right. The amendment did not pass. So, we'll move on.
Can I make a motion now on the original?
You'd like to amend the resolution?
I would like to amend it to the $58,000 plus four $5,000 designations plus the $10,000 for the welding program.
Okay.
Second?
We have an amendment, a motion and a second.
Second for discussion.
Now discussed.
I could go along with you, but let them take their 20 and let them do what they... Then get their 10 from out of their 20. They could take two of those for the 10 for the welding program.
And that's the total, $78,000.
Yeah. They still end up at $8,000, but they can use their 10 from out of their four or five.
I think the concern at this point is getting the total to the $88,000.
You know, I don't really have a problem starting early discussing, but as a council, we discussed it, and there was only one person, as I remember, said it was too late to probably change it. But now, as a council, we voted to go with $78,000, and that's why I feel we should stick it. But I'm willing to let you put that other 20 wherever you want to put it at. I'll go along with that.
I would agree with Mr. Moore.
I think micromanaging or micro... This type of thing we're trying to do is not fair. I don't feel this is fair. It's too late in the year. It's like taking your budget that you give a child, and the child knows this year you can't have this. And you hand them two weeks ahead of time and say, "This is it, and you have to try." And I just don't feel that this is fair at this time. And that's my opinion.
Mary, the request comes, if I'm not mistaken, every year from the chamber about the same time, and that's when it was informed. Now, do I think there could have been better communication? Certainly. But, but it's done the same way. It's been done the same way for I don't know how many years. And we have supported the chamber in FADC. It does not make it right.
That's right.
I'm not disagreeing with that. But we all agreed 100% with the exception of the one person that wasn't at the open budget retreat that we did.
But I made my thoughts known before I left.
You certainly did, without a doubt.
I was present for part of it, not all of it.
But Mary put it in this term. We... You know, no one ever... It was a five-year deal, and it's a... We're not... Like, there's four people, it's gonna be up for reelection. We're not obligated to say it was a lifetime at $88,000, because we can't commit to none of council. And none of us may not be here or something, so...
Exactly.
We might have done late notice on it, but we have a budget and we've got matching grants. And I just says, you know, let them have the 20 if Lindsay wants to go that route with the 20 they want to do with it.
Current amendment is for...
We have a motion to amend the resolution for the 58, the 20, and an extra 10 for the new addition.
Welding program.
Right, welding program.
Yep.
So, the extra, do we tell them where to put that money? Or are they free to take that and put...
So, again, it would be the 58, and then the 20 would be specific to four $5,000 sponsorships. And then that last 10 would be specific to the welding program, according to Chris Paesnick.
Right, so everybody got that? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Hands, please.
No.
Do not...
Hands for no. Hands for no.
Hands for no.
Okay, give me just one second here, sorry.
Explain again.
We're not on the same wavelength.
We're giving them the full $88,000.
Okay.
Is what we're currently voting on. But we're saying that the 10 goes to the welding.
Okay, so just to be clear, I have four no's. Mr. Braun, Mr. Moore, Mr. Shiverdecker, and Ms. Reclu, yes? Okay, then the motion does not pass.
Motion doesn't pass. We're back to the original resolution.
$78,000, which is $58,000 plus $20,000 in sponsorships. That is where we stand right now.
Any more discussion?
Well, I guess we could try a vote again, couldn't we?
All those in favor of the original resolution, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No. Hands, raise those hands, please.
You want the no's?
No, no people, please raise your hands.
So, the resolution fails.
Resolution fails, there is no contract.
At this meeting?
There is no contract as of right now. And I apologize on this end, who was a no? I didn't get to see. Thank you very much.
All right, we move on. Ms. Reclu, would you go ahead and present Resolution 3362?
Yes. Resolution Number 3362, authorization of the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to apply for and sign all necessary documents in relation to the safe route to Parks Grant. I make a motion that Resolution 3262 be approved at night's meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Cobb?
This is a grant that we're looking at to enhance the ADA transition plan that we received some grant funding to do an ADA transition plan recently in the tune of $10,000, $8,000 was actually granted, $2,000 total. This grant would be, and I see it as an adder, to enhance the ADA transition plan. The total that we can receive on this grant is $12,500, I believe. So, just a way to enhance that plan and make that plan actually come to light. So, any questions?
Do you have ideas of what you're gonna do with this, where it's gonna be implemented?
It'll be spent to develop an ADA transition plan. An ADA transition plan basically is a plan of what we're doing with our sidewalks and trying to get our sidewalks more compliant for folks with disabilities. It's also a requirement that an ADA transition plan is a requirement by the federal government under the ADA Act of 1990, I believe.
Is this also a matching grant?
There is no monetary match required. We are looking for... One key element to this grant is the city. to be the actual applicant and the city supports that applicant and be the key partner. So we're looking for, we're looking for that 501(c)(3), Fulton Area Development Foundation. It's somebody we're looking at.
I'm sorry, Kyle, but the resolution reads that we're authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to sign all necessary documents in relation to-
If there's any necessary document that the city needs to sign and the process, then we will. But, you know, we're, what we're essentially looking for is support for you to go after, for us to go after this grant and seek a 501(c)(3) partner.
So a document we might sign is that partnership document, not necessarily the application.
Right, I know that-
Thank you.
I know that Gail Aden with our, and Finance are looking for that partner. And I know that they've talked with Tamra and the Chamber of Commerce, Fulton Area Development.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't, we didn't have the resolution worded incorrectly. Thank you.
Can I ask him?
So Kyle, in your memo, where you have two thousand dollars for a city match that's not actually correct?
So Kyle, in your memo, where you have two thousand dollars for a city match that's not actually correct?
That's a memo in reference to the teepe that we were awarded. That's, that's, that grant.
All right, there's no more discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? If ordinance, or resolution passes. So let's move on to ordinances. And the same thing with ordinances that we had in the last. We had an ordinance that was put on the table. Is there anybody who would like to remove the ordinance off the table for consideration tonight? Ordinance number fifteen sixty-three.
Well, we need to remove it from the table if we want to keep it alive, right?
Right, correct.
So I move to remove from the table.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I feel like it needs to go right back to the table.
And just to be clear, anyone who's watching, you might have said this and I might have missed it, but this is pertaining to the 2020 budget.
All those in favor say yes.
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 All opposed? Right, resolution is removed from the table.
My fault.
Ordinance has been removed from the table.
Okay.
All right, now, said the last meeting, we had a motion at the last meeting to place the bill for final passage. Madam Clerk.
So Mr. Schibberdecker made the motion and Ms. Paysnook seconded that. Do your motions still stand?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, then we can go ahead and have discussion.
I move to table Bill number fifteen sixty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is there any way that we can go ahead and pass the budget without the contract being completely approved? We can go ahead and pass the budget, keep those funds allocated currently?
There is, there is, there is seventy-eight thousand budgeted-
Right.
-in the budget. Without a contract, that money would not be expended. But it could be looked at as being a placeholder. If there's additional desire to raise it, there's a couple places in the budget of, what, some discretionary funds where we would be able to find that extra ten thousand dollars.
So we could go ahead and pass the budget to get that taken care of?
We could pass the budget tonight without any problem, without any worries.
I've had some concerns that were expressed to me about table eight, the budget, and just kind of waiting on that from some employees. So I do think going ahead and moving forward with passing that would be helpful. I would love to see that happen this evening.
With that additional information, I rescind my motion to table.
I'll rescind.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to the original ordinance.
You guys are just trying to put me through the wringer tonight.
Yeah, any more discussion on this? Any more discussion on this ordinance?
Do we need to make a new motion?
No. That motion will still stand from Mr. Schibberdecker and Ms. Paysnook.
All right, all those in favor say yes.
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 All opposed? Ordinance fifteen sixty-three passes.
It actually will go to-
It goes to a roll call read.
Right, yes. All right, Mr. Moore, are you in favor of this ordinance passing?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Paysnook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
All right, next we'll move on to first reading ordinances. Councilman Stone, would you present Bill fifteen sixty-eight, please, for first reading?
Bill number fifteen sixty-eight, an ordinance amending Section one hundred and ten dash two hundred and eighty-three, stop signs and yield signs, Fulton City Code, by removing certain yield signs and acting stop signs in their place and establishing an effective date. I move for passage of first reading of Bill fifteen sixty-eight at tonight's meeting.
Second.
I move for second reading at the next meeting. Thank you. I felt you, Courtney.
For the benefit of the audience, what this ordinance would do would make all cross streets on Court Street between Tenth and Sixth stop signs, rather than the existing yield sign.
Will this have any impact on the speed limits? Or will that be-
This ordinance will not affect the speed limits, but I do believe that's something that has been discussed and they're monitoring now.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? We've already discussed. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Moves on for the next reading at the next meeting. Would you please present Bill number fifteen sixty-nine for first reading?
Bill number fifteen sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relationship to the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Traffic Engineering Assistance Program Agreement for the TEAP zero-two-eight project award. I make a motion. We place Bill fifteen sixty-nine for second reading at next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on this much, on this bill?
Do we have any projects in mind for that, Kyle?
As I was discussing earlier, this is to develop that ADA, help us develop an ADA transition plan.
This is the second part of it.
Yeah, give us assistance with it, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, no more discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? The ordinance moves on to the next bill. Moves on to the next council meeting. So we'll now move on to second reading ordinances. Councilman Braun, you're the man in the light again. Fifteen sixty-five for second reading, please.
I would like to do the second and the third reading on this this evening, please.
Okay.
Bill number sixteen, fifteen sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare certain tracts of land known as six oh seven Bluff Street and six oh nine Bluff Street to be surplus property, authorizing their distribution and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to read Bill fifteen sixty-five for a third time this evening.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Councilman Braun, would you present it for a third time, please?
Bill number fifteen sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare certain tracts of land known as six oh seven Bluff Street and six oh nine Bluff Street to be surplus property, authorizing their distribution and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to put Bill fifteen sixty-five for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? So you've heard Bill fifteen sixty-five read three times. Please make your final consideration as the clerk reads the roll.
Okay, Ms. Paysnook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Fifteen sixty-five passes. Councilwoman Paysnook, please present Bill number fifteen sixty-six for second reading.
Thank you, I'd like to do second and third.
Thank you.
Bill number fifteen sixty-six, an ordinance amending Appendix A, zoning, Section One definitions, by removing certain language pertaining to parking space regulations and establishing an effective date. Make a motion to place Bill number fifteen sixty-six for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Councilwoman Paysnook, please read it for the third time.
Bill number fifteen sixty-six, an ordinance amending Appendix A, zoning, Section One definitions, by removing certain language pertaining to parking space regulations and establishing an effective date. Make a motion to place Bill number fifteen sixty-six for final passage at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? So you've heard Bill number fifteen sixty-six read three times. Please make your final consideration as the clerk reads the roll.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Paysnook?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
All right, Councilman Moore, would you please present Bill number fifteen sixty-seven for second read?
Bill seventeen, ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing it to be sold and establishing effective date. I move this for final passage at tonight's meeting for third reading.
Third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? All right, Councilman Moore, please present Bill fifteen sixty-seven for third reading.
Bill number fifteen sixty-seven, ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing it to be sold, establishing effective date. This is the final passage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I know I changed it up on you. All those opposed say no. All right, you have heard Bill number fifteen sixty-seven read three times. Please make your final considerations as the clerk reads the roll.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Paysnook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Fifteen sixty-seven passes. We now move on to third reading ordinances. Councilwoman Seabacher, please present Bill fifteen sixty-four for third reading.
Yes, sir, and may I just say thank you for being so quick this evening. I just checked the weather. We're under a tornado watch, so get home safely to your families. Bill number fifteen sixty-four, an ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing it to be sold and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen sixty-four for final passage at this council meeting.